Ten-second warning, if you can all please take your seats, we'll get started. We apologize for being late this evening. We were in an executive session doing board and commission interviews. We appreciate your patience. I will call to order the meeting for Gilbert Town Council for September 20th, 2022. First, we will have a pledge of allegiance led by council member September.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Next, we will have our invocation by Michelle Noe, is that correct? Noe, the CEO from Boosta Foster Family and member of Sun Valley Church. Thanks for coming out this evening, Michelle.
Thank you. God of wisdom, we seek your help this beautiful September evening. Let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so we can effectively tackle each part of the needs in our community. Let us help every member who resides in Gilbert, whether they be rich, poor, or anywhere in the middle. Let us recognize the needs and address the issues respectfully. Reveal problem areas and help us see issues and show us the best solutions that apply. Above all else, let us remember the golden rule and treat others as we would like to be treated ourselves. In this world, let us be kind and helpful to our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Michelle. We appreciate you being out here this evening. Could I have a roll call from the clerk or deputy, please?
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Entes.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks. He is present online. Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
And councilmember Kathy Tilke. And she is also present online. We have a court mayor.
Thank you, Judy. We appreciate that. First, we have a proclamation declaring the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If I could have the DV team, please come down and join me at the front of the room. Nice to see you all. Your council's in purple this evening. Whatever you would like. Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is an underreported and devastating crime that affects over 10 million Americans each year across all demographics. And whereas while domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, it is preventable, preventable with advocating and educational efforts designed to break the behavioral cycle of abusers and empower victims, families, communities, and institutions to use their voice for awareness. And whereas Arizona ranks in the top five states within the United States of the highest rate of domestic violence and victimization. And whereas Gilbert serves on the Maricopa Association of Governments Domestic Violence Subcommittee to ensure regional discussions and consistent policies that support domestic violence victims. And whereas the dedication of Gilbert's family violence officers, police counselors, prosecutors, and victim advocates can be found in their daily efforts which impact and save lives each and every day. And whereas Gilbert joins local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and agencies in our commitment to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and reaffirms that domestic violence is not tolerated in our community. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Would you like that? I'd like to have each of you give us your name and your role within the town of Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Keith Bradshaw. I'm the counseling manager for Gilbert PD.
Good evening. My name is Emily Karen. I'm the victim advocate with Gilbert PD.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Ramirez. I serve as the court commissioner here in the municipal court.
I'm Alissa Paddock, and I oversee the domestic violence shelter in my sister's place.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wolf. I am an assistant town prosecutor with Prosecutor's Office, and I run our domestic violence program.
And I am Eric Snow, the sergeant over the family violence unit with the Gilbert Police Department.
Thanks, Eric. I'd also like to recognize Monica DiOrtenzio because she is the liaison from Mayor and Council's office to the MAGDV group. I serve as the liaison from the Mayor and Council's office to the MAGDV group. If we could get you all together for a photo, that would be great. And I wanted to mention that we're doing our Domestic Violence Proclamation this evening because we don't meet again until October 18th, so we wanted to make sure to get this out and on everybody's radar for the month of October. Thanks for being here and thanks for all you do for our community. Thank you. We'll have a presentation recognizing the 2022 MVP award nominees and winners for the town of Gilbert. Do we have a staff member that's going to present those? Oh, Nathan Williams. Nathan Williams from HR versus Nathan Williams from planning. Two people with the same name, Mark, for the town of Gilbert.
Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Entes, members of council. I appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate you mentioning that I'm not the only Nathan Williams that works for the town of Gilbert. There is a smarter, better-looking one that works in our planning department, but tonight you're stuck with me. So I love this opportunity each year to recognize our four winners of our MVP. We have four winners of our annual MVP because we have four values, and I will cover those in a moment. But what's, I think, so important is really to acknowledge that there are, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of 1,600 staff dedicated to this community, and every one of them works tirelessly, day in and day out, to make sure that this is a vibrant, beautiful, safe, livable community for today and for the future. And we are so fortunate to have such fantastic, high-performing individuals working here for the town. So we always, it's with a little bit of disappointment that we can't recognize all 1,600 when we do this MVP process, but we also, you'll see at the end, we don't have the time tonight to recognize formally every single individual that was nominated, but we had 90 nominations this year for our MVP, and then obviously had a selection committee that was able to narrow that down to our four winners. I want to ask a couple logistical items before I go through the winners. If you could, so I'm going to announce the winner, and then I'm going to read a bio that you'll see on the screen about the winner as they come down. If you could save your applause just until I get a chance to read the bio, that way you'll hear where they work and what they do here with Gilbert. And then when they come down, we'll have each winner come down when they're announced. They'll get a photo with you, Mayor Peterson, if you don't mind, and with Patrick Banjar, our town manager. They'll be provided their gift, and then they'll wait to the side until all four winners have had a chance to come down, and then we'll do one more group photo. So thumbs up, everybody, we're good on that? All right, perfect. Okay. So our first, I don't know who's progressing the slides for me. Judy, is that you? Oh, am I doing it? Oh, okay, cool. All right. I have all the control. This is concerning, yeah. So you've got kind of icons here for our values, and as I mentioned, there are four of them, and I'll explain each one as I go through. So our first value of driven, you know, we have value statements that you can find on our town website, and that's really what we focus on when we talk about and we recognize the efforts within these values, but I'll just give some summaries. For driven, we have phrases like passionate and driven to excel, strives every day to give Gilbert the future it deserves. And the individual that is awarded this, the MVP award for driven tonight absolutely exemplifies that. And our winner is Erica Brown. Erica's passion for promoting wellness has been infectious. She always goes above and beyond to provide guidance and assistance in bringing new ideas to promote wellness to our departments. She has inspired me to bring the program and all that it entails to the Fleet Division staff members, and we've seen a significant increase in our team's participation due to her efforts. Erica is a member of our people team. You can applaud me. Oh, do you want to hold? Yeah, it's in a box. You can take it out, you can take it out. All right. Our next value that we're going to recognize tonight is the value of kind. And a couple of those phrases or talking points that stand out in our value of kind is, "We are inclusive and spread Gilbert kindness in our words and our actions." And the individual that we are recognizing tonight is actually two individuals, which this is the first time we've ever done this, but we have a married couple, Larry and Denise Horn, that work in our Parks and Rec Department, and the statement here is, "It is rare to meet people like Larry and Denise these days, people who are 100% themselves, 100% self-starters, and genuinely kind people, even on days where they might not be feeling their best. You would never know. I aspire to be more like Larry and Denise every day. And in case you're wondering, Larry did acknowledge, I think that Denise is just a little kinder, right? But congratulations to Larry and Denise. All right. For our next value, our next value is bold. And some of the items that I pulled out on this one are, "Gilbert is a safe place for big ideas, and we are committed to constant improvement." Our winner this year for our MVP under the category of bold is Josh Rogers. Josh, the statement about Josh is, "When I see the definition of bold, the person who immediately comes to mind is my colleague Josh Rogers. He's unafraid to share his opinion, whether it is a common one or devil's advocate. I can count on Josh to be his authentic self because he speaks up willingly and openly in order to champion ideas and processes for the betterment of Gilbert's community, All right, one more applause for Josh. And our last value of humble. A few things that stand out in our, under our value of humble is, "Service is at the heart of everything we do. We embrace servant leadership, and we celebrate others' successes." And our winner for the value of humble this year is Jason Montgomery. Jason comes to work each day with the servant leader mindset. He understands that the efforts we expend and the time, frustration, and care we put into quite literally building the city of the future go unnoticed by the typical person, and yet he finds great personal value and satisfaction. I see in him a commitment to that quiet dedication, the honoring of service that stretches back into the core of who he is and how he carries himself. From him, I'm reminded that it is public service. It is an incredible thing we are privileged to provide, and Jason works in our public works team. Oh, sure. Sorry, we need a camera backdrop here. All right, one more time for all of our winners. And then, as I mentioned, I'm just going to, on the last item here on the screen, oh, I lost my clicker. I think somebody took away my driving. There we go. If you can just go to the last slide, there we go. That is all of our nominees for this year, so I wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for them to be recognized. They will all be recognized on the town's Intranet page for all of our employees to celebrate all of their nominations. So thank you all to those who've nominated, and thank you to the winners and the nominees for their hard work and their dedication to this community.
It is my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. The recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hardworking students, but to also thank all the teachers, the school administrators, the amazing parents, and the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools and our families are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. I do apologize upfront if I mispronounce anybody's name, butcher a first or last name, so please have a little bit of grace as I work through some of these more difficult names. At this time, we're going to begin our Student Citizens of the Month presentation. Please enjoy. For those of you who are receiving an award tonight, a certificate and a packet will be delivered to your school. First, we'll begin with elementary school students. With attending Ashland Ranch, Luke Heelskamp. From Bridges Elementary, Cooper Cross. From Burke Elementary, Benjamin Clark. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Ava Dossi. From Centennial Elementary, Leila LaForkade. From Chaparral Elementary, Amelia Kent. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Haley Flores. From Edge of Price Schools, Violet Seviahah. From Gateway Point Elementary, Olivia Wade. From Highland Park Elementary, Bentley Hendershot. From Higley Traditional Academy, Zi Yin Ling. From Higley Virtual Academy, Grace Cook. From Islands Elementary, Jack Spangler. From Mesquite Elementary, Andrew Ziering. From Neely Traditional Academy, Brielle Menzie. And from Oak Tree Elementary, Evan Cook. From Pioneer Elementary, Amelia Queros. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Cash Luna. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Jada Nash. And from Santana Elementary, Isabella Way. From Settlers Point Elementary, Peyton Jakins. From Spectrum Elementary, Jay Caskey. From Val Vista Academy, Robbie Gariano. And from Weinberg Gifted Academy, Elias Orion Glenn. We'll give a round of applause for our elementary school students. It's always so much better when you can see their little cute faces in person. Now, we will honor our junior high and our high school students. From Campo Verde High School, Gabriela Saber. From Canyon Valley High School, Rachel Drake. From Canyon Valley Junior High, Isabella France. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Abigail Sawyer. From Gilbert High School, Christopher Van Sant. From Mesquite High School, Shiloh Rosado. And from South Valley Junior High, Berkeley Bass. Thank you and congratulations to all of our winners of Student Citizens of the Month. You make us proud and keep up the good work. Mayor, can we go to communications from citizens? Next portion of our agenda is communications from citizens. We do value the input from our Gilbert citizens. Hopefully, you all received or saw the cards out in the foray if you wanted to provide comments to the council this evening. You are required to fill out one of these requests to speak cards for each item in which you wish to speak on prior to the meeting, starting, this communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items. At the conclusion of the open call, the public response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, please state your name, your place of residence, and then you can begin speaking. We'll have three minutes for each speaker tonight. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy, personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate. We're also asking to, I know there were some people who had signs, if you could not wave your signs during the meeting, it was fine. I walked through, I saw someone outside the public building, that was fine, but if we could refrain from using the signs on the inside. With that, we will begin, I think we only have 11 speakers. I will read into the record everybody who filled out a comment card but wished not to speak, but just provide comments on their card. If you don't mind, Mayor will do that first, so I'll just read these in, and then we'll get to our speakers. So Jackie Cotrell, again, if I misspell or misspeak anybody's name, I apologize, not wishing to speak but against the ranch proposal. Robert Jones, against the ranch is a poorly conceived project. It's a porous outcome for Gilbert and its residents. It would be an eyesore. Bonnie Verquere, regarding Project ST 0990, behind closed doors meetings concerning this project is ridiculous. We have been screaming for better communication, and now you do this. Jeremy Brayden, I did not mark against, but says, "I strongly oppose the rezoning of the ranch." Tracy Boyd, "I'm strongly opposed to the changing of the zoning for the ranch." Jenny Everett, "I'm strongly opposed to the ranch power and Elliott rezoning." Charles Wright, "We do not want such large buildings near our home. The obstruction noise will be awful." Rob Laring, "Rozoning the land east of Morrison Ranch on Ricker and Elliott is opposed." Sherri Laney, "Rozoning land east of Morrison Ranch on Ricker and Elliott, opposed." Rebecca Wright, "We do not want the buildings next to our home. They look awful lower the value of our home and beauty of our neighborhood." Leslie St. Age, against changing zoning of law on Power Road between Elliott and Warner. Putting that kind of proposed building will hurt our property values, detract from the neighborhood. Stephanie Evans, against the rezoning of the land between Elliott and Warner, west of Power Road. Kelly Fortier, concerned about the industrial use, traffic pollution, not what was represented. I'm okay with some commercial use with minimal industrial use as was first planned. William St. Ange, against rezoning of the land Ray and Power Road. Chris Cox, rezoning of the ranch to predominantly light industrial will not benefit the community in any way. It should remain zoned as mixed use for retail, commercial, residential. Esther Madrano, against industrial building in Morrison Ranch. Daniel Madrano, against the industrial building in Morrison Ranch. Laura Jepson, "It's not good for the neighborhood. It's not right or fair for the change of the zoning after the fact." Jennifer Wada, against no rezoning of land east of Elliott Grows, power between Warner and Elliott. Rachel and Matthew Kustick, live in Elliott Grows, no on rezoning land east of Power. Daniel Straza, against the ranch. Sarah Straza, against the ranch. William Monahan, against rezoning Morrison Ranch. Roy Haney, "The plans for the ranch height and density is too high and too much." Roy Haney, the plans for the ranch height and density is too high and too much. Christine Haney, the proposed buildings on Power and Elliott, against. Tom Everett, "I'm opposed to the rezoning of the ranch. It is not appropriate to have the industrial zoning on that scale in our neighborhood." Jessica Chrysler, against rezoning to allow for the development of industrial building, large building at the ranch. Natalie Knoll-Miller, "I live in the area and am extremely concerned about the traffic in the surrounding area." Okay, so, those will all be reflected in the minutes for the meeting. We will move to our speakers who expressed a desire to speak. So, first up, we have Rich Robertson. If you would say your name and your place of residence, and you will have three minutes. Following Rich, we will have Teri Natty, and then Brian Mosley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Rich Robertson. I'm at 15714 East Ocatillo Road. That's County Island in Gilbert. As regarding the Ocatillo Road expansion, I'd like to talk a little bit about transparency, or more to the point, lack of transparency in that project. There's been a lot of lip service about a participatory process and a willingness to engage in discussions with our residents that are most affected, but that just hasn't happened. There was a glimmer of hope when, a few months ago, after all of our complaints and protests, you finally instructed the staff to find ways to mitigate the damage of turning that two-lane road into a five-lane road through our established rural neighborhood. Those are my words, not yours. But appraisals were suspended as a result, and we understood that the staff was working diligently and using their skills to find a way to come up with some mitigation efforts. We've been waiting anxiously for a seat at that table and provide our feedback and suggestions about what goes on. And frankly, to get educated, we don't know about road construction. It would help us to know as well. But now, that analysis apparently has concluded, and you have been briefed, including a complete PowerPoint presentation. We know that you were briefed in individual and small groups because that's what you do when you want to avoid a quorum that would trigger the public getting to be participating. You know that others were briefed outside of the town council about this. And we know that we were never briefed. No one affected by this was ever briefed at all. Without those advanced briefings, you would not be in a position tonight to get the legal advice that you're seeking in the executive session. It appears that your small group briefings were intended to create consensus about the outcome, which I have no doubt will say there's no other option than 65 feet. Since you haven't involved us, I submitted a public records request on September 9th asking for that PowerPoint, which is a public record. When I checked the status of that request today, I was told by the clerk's office that it would take two months, that I should call back in a month and see. It's the secrecy, the duplicity, the window dressing, the patronizing doublespeak on the website that generates the kind of ill will that has come out of this particular project. You don't really want citizen involvement, it feels, because that just makes your job harder. But that's the cost of open government. In describing your organizational culture on the town's website, you say, "We promote emotionally intelligent leaders who put people and relationships before processes and tools. We serve each other and our community with respect and civility. We believe the ability to connect and help is just as important as talent and knowledge." Not from where I sit. Thank you.
If we could... That sign needs to go in the back of the row. A woman just raised a sign in the back row. The sign needs to go. Please. That lady right there. We have asked for decorum, please. Teri, do you want to take your three minutes?
I would love to, thank you. My name is Teri Natty. You all know me by now. I live in a county island within the Gilbert Planning Area. I have voiced my opinion loud, far, and wide on this project. I was pretty much put as the voice of my community. And I hear, after the fact, that in this presentation that you guys got with the slides and everything, that you were told that a lot of the complaints came from one person. I know that that's me. I want to remind you that I spoke for more than just me. How many people are here from my neighborhood today? Okay. I spoke for more than just me. The people that are going to speak for Morrison Ranch, how many people are here on that issue? Please stand. Stand up. Let them all see you. Stand up. One person might speak, but we speak for more than just one. Okay? Earlier this evening, you guys talked about values and how you hold them near and dear to your heart. I want to remind you to be driven to serve your community and those within your community. I want to remind you to be kind in your decisions that affect your community and mine. I want you to be bold and go against the norm, including the Gilbert standard and the norm when it comes to the design for Ocatillo roadway. I want you to be humble and put aside any agenda that you may have to see things from your constituents' point of view. Those four values are amazing, and I want to see them reflected in this executive decision or this executive session that we don't get to see, we don't get to see the minutes of. I don't understand why it's not a study session. I have sat through study sessions and I've watched power presentations be given to you guys so that you can talk about it in a public forum. I don't understand why this project is being hidden away. It's not okay, and it smells dirty. It smells rotten, and it doesn't look good on you guys at all.
I apologize. I might not have been totally clear upfront. We don't actually allow clapping in the communications from citizens. The purpose is, is we do try to retain decorum so that everybody has the ability and the time that we're allotting to this portion of the agenda, and they can speak freely, whether it's in support of the majority opinion or not. And so, to create that kind of environment, that's why we do that. I'm not saying everybody has to agree with it, I'm just saying those are going to be, those are the rules of the forum, and we do ask that you respect those rules. Brian, please.
Thank you. My name is Brian Mosley. I live in Morrison Ranch here in Gilbert. Have for the last seven years or so since they built our home there. I wanted to thank everyone who reviewed my concerns about the notice and participation opportunities that we were having with this, and for the planning commission, or for moving that date, so that we can have that when we were able to participate. Really appreciate that, and people I've talked to do as well. The last time, I talked to you about how you would never dream of approving a warehouse on the empty lot in the north of the Heritage District because the general objective of having employment or a desire to have a greater mix of industrial wouldn't have overridden, you know, the goals of that Heritage District. So, you just would have ignored that outright. And I wanted to start with another thought experiment today, which is, your son or daughter comes home from school, tells you, "Good news, Mom or Dad. I have Ds or better in all of my classes." And then they say, "Except for reading, writing, and arithmetic." And although it's a preliminary traffic study, that's basically what the traffic study says about the ranch that I've reviewed so far. We're going to have a D or better level of service at all of our stoplights except for Power and Elliott, Power and Warner, and Power in the 202. All the important arterial intersections that matter. And, you know, for the most important, you know, Power and Elliott right by our neighborhood is just not going to get better. It's going to stay at a level of service at F. And, you know, I know, I understand that anything is going to contribute to traffic. But if you look deeper at the report, you see that they have terrible traffic even getting out of it. Several of their exits are marked with double asterisks that say, "Extreme reported delay on minor leg left turn." You know, they can't even get out of there because there's so many people. They talk about how, you know, the trucks are probably going to go around to the lights to try to get out of the neighborhood. And this goes to my comment about the intensity of the use, the fact that these are not just regular light industrial buildings where somebody might have their office and a little bit of storage. These are, whatever they call them, double bay, opposing bay warehouses where they'll just line up as many semis, hundreds down one side and hundreds down the other side, unloading and loading stuff with a forklift, putting it in, building, whatever they're doing inside, all kinds of noise. And I speak from experience. I worked for UPS before, when Amazon was a book company. And it is loud in the yards. The trucks are starting and stopping. It's the loudest, you know, timed operated truck. Every time they back up, they got that beeping thing. If there's a safety issue, there's a horn. A horn on your car has to be heard audible from 200 feet away, and they're talking about putting these 212 feet from our houses. And you imagine these giant concrete canyons echoing each of those noises back and forth to our homes. The intensity of use here is incredible. And I just want to say that, you know, this idea that it's just a business park, the industrial is the second level of intensity. If you look at the town plan, business park is the lowest transitional intensity, the thing that belongs next to neighborhoods. Light industrial is the middle. It's the next. It's where regular manufacturing happens, and it's going to make a big difference to change all of this to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we'll have Evelyn Niklaus, and then Amy Homan, and then Ryan Handelsman.
Hello. My name is Evelyn Niklaus, and I live in Gilbert. And this is my first time speaking at a council meeting, so I'm happy to be here. Well, not exactly, because I'm here because I'm opposed to the ranch project. My first time hearing about this project was just a few weeks ago, and I was looking at the layout of the buildings that are proposed, and I'm deeply concerned because I have small children, and we use the facilities all around the street. My children go to Cactus Yards for sports. My son goes to 4H at the Roosevelt Water District Building. We go to the Ritucho Farms for our festival, our fall festival. We are planning on going to Cannon Beach, and the idea that we have all these beautiful homes, this beautiful neighborhood with all these beautiful homes, and then all these children's services, and then putting a light industrial facility smack dab in the middle of all that, just seems like I'm just completely blown away and shocked, and this just does not seem in line with the Gilbert that I know. And I would ask that you reconsider what you're putting in there, putting in something that's going to be safe for the children. Like, I have concerns about my children crossing the street with trucks like that when they're going to be playing sports in the neighborhood. It just seems like it's going to be an accident waiting to happen. And, yeah, I'm just very concerned, and I would ask that you reconsider and not approve the zoning as it stands now. Thank you.
I'm Amy Homan. I live in Greenfield Lakes. And the town stated that it had a voter ratified general plan, but it's constantly being changed without a vote from citizens, and always to the benefit of the developer. Why is this council planning on bringing overcrowding and industrial businesses into our neighborhoods, which goes against the plan that was voted on by the people? Why are you planning on creating some multimillion-dollar bridge and road construction that will take people's land who desperately do not want to lose their homes, and that, again, is against what the people voted in? Where do you think the schools will get more teachers, since we can't get them now as it is? With overcrowding, we're going to need more police, fire, and EMTs, which, again, we are struggling to get. We will be using hundreds of thousands of gallons of water for the thousands of new residents, which will deflate our already dwindling water supply. Where's that coming from? Where are you going to get the money to cover this? I would guess you would be looking at a primary property tax to cover the density, which is, again, against the original town plan. These changes that you have done already that are outside of the plan are not tiny changes. They have completely changed the feeling and the tone of this town. The people want a voice. You are not following the voter ratified general plan. We want to be heard. Please create a new vote so the constituents can be heard. The people deserve to have a say.
After Ryan, we'll have Daniel Paxton, and then Pat DiMario.
I'd like to start out by stating that I don't believe there is any statute or code that prevents meeting attendees from silently holding signs. I see rules that prohibit disorderly conduct, like clapping or threats, that I don't see anything that would prohibit silent displays of a sign. So, that seems to be a First Amendment, free speech, and it seems like you guys are attempting to silence us and violate our personal rights. With that being said, the only thing more absurd than seeing that proposal of an industrial park larger than Santana Village is hearing that it was allegedly the town's idea. I met with Mike Shernine last week. A few of you on the council know him. He donated upwards of $10,000 collectively to a couple of your campaigns. But for those that don't know, he's the CEO of Indycap, spearheading the Power Ranch, or The Ranch, project. So, imagine my surprise when Mike said to me, he sat with the town staff and the staff told him that Gilbert needs an industrial complex spanning the length of over five football fields with nearly 1,000 loading docks. Where in God's name would he get that idea from, or they get that idea from? Considering that the council unanimously approved the 2020 general plan, and later the voters ratified it, why would some unelected bureaucrats think they have the right to contradict blatantly and recklessly what the council submitted and the voters approved, especially of this magnitude? I mean, from 15% approximately to 90%? Come on. By approving this expansion, or any other major project of this magnitude for that matter, only cements my theory that you and the people sitting beside you have lost control of this town, and the tail is wagging the dog. If I was sitting there, I'd be embarrassed. I'd be mortified, frankly. So, I leave you with two thoughts. Talk to the staff, because if this was their idea of what Gilbert wants or needs, what the heck are they thinking? And when faced with the opportunity to vote on this matter, vote on behalf of the people, not your campaign donors. If you're unsure of what the people want, well, hopefully, tonight is the first of many signs of what they want. And hopefully, the petitions that come across your desk and the other people that are coming up to speak tonight will give you a good indication of what we want and not what your wallets want.
Ryan? Can you just, could you please state your name and residence?
Ryan Handelsman, Gilbert, Arizona.
Perfect, thank you. Daniel.
Hi, I'm Daniel Payton. I think it said Paxton. It's Payton. I'm in Gilbert, Arizona. I live off Mesquite Street. Thank you for having me tonight. I normally don't speak at things like this. I normally don't get involved in anything remotely close to this, but I'm here because of the ranch project that a lot of people have expressed concerns with on the cards, and a lot of people have also expressed concerns with here, just speaking today in general. And I think the big issue that people see is that this is kind of the last really good piece of land in Gilbert, Arizona, to develop general commercial and business park as it's currently zoned. There's about 16% of that land, as people have said, that is zoned for light industrial use. We desperately, desperately need, on the east side of town, places to spend our money. All of us are stuck going either into Mesa or going to Santana Village to spend that money. We've got significant developments starting right now in the area. Well, it's not in Gilbert, it is in... It is in Mesa, and it's going to draw so many people into that area that will need a place to go. We've got Hawes Crossing starting right off of Elliott. It's going to bring thousands of people in. We've got Gabriella Point starting right down Higley. It's going to bring hundreds and hundreds of apartments, hundreds and hundreds of people. We've got millions of square feet of industrial warehousing currently under development in Mesa. Like, this is our last chance, and it feels like if we approve this, we might be picking up a penny today to step over literally hundreds of dollars of bills in the future. What we're seeing from the applicant is a request to rezone 90, to rezone the land by 76%. They want to make it a 96% industrial use. This is 4 million square feet of industrial complex directly next to a character area of our general plan. As some other people have pointed out correctly, that general plan is a voter ratified document. So a lot of us rely on that when we make decisions. We think this is how our city's going to responsibly grow and how we're responsibly going to vote for what our town wants. This is what the people want. And when we look, a 92% industrial use isn't what we want. I mean, we understand, and I think everyone understands, that there is a critical need for industrial buildings. Just rezoning a character area to get 92% industrial and 4 million square feet of warehouse space directly adjacent to a character area doesn't make the most sense, I think, to everyone in this room that's here for the ranch project. So I think people generally support, and they would be excited about a development, just not that exact, specific development. I would like to close with, just a few short years ago, there was another general plan amendment. I think it was General Plan 18009, which sought to rezone the land generally located at Warner and Recker. That land was zoned light industrial. The attorney who's representing IndyCap argued in 2018 that the industrial use did not make sense, or I'm sorry, light industrial and business park uses are incompatible with the existing residential development in the area. That was all zoned light industrial. It's literally adjacent to the ranch. Like, it butts to it. And now here we are, coming up three years later, and the existing zoning doesn't make sense. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Daniel. Please. Thank you. Thanks, Terry. Pat DiMario, and then Tom Smith, and then Lisa Bard, and then Catherine Puckett.
Pat DiMario, Morrison Ranch, Gilbert. We built our home in Morrison Ranch seven years ago. Before we made our purchase, we did our homework and understood the future plans and zoning for the area. The future plans did not include a major industrial warehouse district in our neighborhood. By the way, it's fooling no one to call, to call multiple six-story-high warehouses with loading docks "light industrial." Morrison Ranch original owners have sold a bill of goods to duped homeowners. In the retail world, the term for this practice is bait and switch. Homeowners made a purchase based on what the sellers presented them, and now that the sellers have their money, they want to change the plan. That's unethical and dishonest practice. We, as a community, hate to think that our city council supports such dishonesty. If you were a victim, you'd agree. Had any one of us known that this was the plan, or that it was a remote possibility, we wouldn't have built Morrison Ranch. We would have made our sizable home purchases elsewhere, possibly not even in Gilbert. We now find ourselves at the mercy of the leaders of the Gilbert community. We ask that they do what's ethically right and best practice by retaining the current zoning and thereby forcing the parcel's owners to keep its promises to the buyers, we residents. None of you, in your heart of hearts, can honestly, and I repeat, honestly, say you'd want a major industrial warehouse district with loading docks in your backyard. So how can you think it's okay to do that to good, honest, hard-working, proud citizens of Gilbert? There are other areas in Gilbert far more suitable for this complex than in a neighborhood of beautiful homes, families, and schools. In your heart of hearts, in your heart of hearts, please hear us and respect us. Don't do to us what you wouldn't want to have done to you and your neighborhood. By the way, for those of you who have accepted campaign donations from these industrial warehouse developers, well, it's the community's perception that this is a conflict of interest, that your vote has been purchased and it's guaranteed to them. You should recuse yourselves from voting on this issue. Remember, perception is reality. Regardless of your denial, I repeat, perception is reality despite what you may say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. If we... Okay, three more. If we could, please not clap. Tom Smith.
Good evening. Tom Smith, Morrison Ranch. What a turnout we have. It's great to see all you guys out there supporting this, bringing some of these issues to light. I've had the opportunity, probably the last four or five council meetings to come here, to kind of watch the process, kind of see what, how everything is done. And it's abundantly clear to me that we, as constituents, don't have a clue as to what this body up here is doing. Because there's projects that are ongoing that are rubber stamped, just like all these apartments that we now have. And now we have a thing called the ranch. And I vehemently oppose not only the zoning, just the whole idea, period. I would like to just yield my time back to the mayor and you other people, and just answer this simple question to all of us. What thought process went in your mind to approve that project? It makes no sense whatsoever. And I've also heard, and I'd also like confirmation, that it's going to be a battery plant. Hope you guys are ready for that. Thank you.
Lisa Bard. If you could say your name and residence for the record.
I am Lisa Ballard, longtime Gilbert resident, Arizona native. So today, I took the minute to review the Gilbert website, and I found it fascinating, and also quite ironic and very hypocritical. Few statements from the website and the videos that you guys have. It says, "Today, we all play a role in the design and development of tomorrow." Can you honestly sit there and tell us today that this is true, that we all play a role in the design and development in Gilbert? It also says, "Together, we shape the future." And again, it states, "We shape the future." From where I'm sitting in this perspective here, it is a few of you deciding what goes on in this town. Another piece, "Gilbert chooses to help people," which you talked about earlier. "We're the city of the future, the model of civic responsibility, the model of engagement, but it's very hard to engage with a council and a mayor who only truly seem to have agendas for themselves and their pocketbooks." We also talk about, on that video, it talks about the model of sustainability. As I stand here today, and I'm asking you, as the councilman, as the mayor, and any lawyers or developers that are here, and I don't know if this is still on, but how is Gilbert going to be able to sustain anything within the next five to 10 years? As the other woman previously talked about, how are we going to continue to build these light industrial 65, 70-story buildings in our neighborhoods when we have kids running around? It is my biggest fear to see a child smashed by a semi. I've driven the 10 enough to see too many accidents of cars under semis. It is heartbreaking and sickening. How can you possibly think that allowing manufacturers to come in with highly toxic chemicals, how is that a benefit to our neighborhood? What is the impact of all of these buildings in our towns? You guys continually add apartment building after apartment building on every single corner. Where are we going to get our water? Where's the electricity going to come from? What about all the traffic and the CO2 emissions? When we talk about sustainability, where is that in Gilbert? That should be a priority. It's right there on your website. According to your website, we also have 947 miles of road in Gilbert. And at what cost? Have you guys driven down Higley on Warner Road at all? Have you driven south on Higley when school is out and everybody and their dog is trying to get onto the 202 or to go north? How and who is going to pay for all of the people coming into this town? You also put in there that Gilbert chooses to help people, but again, who are you helping? Are you helping this town, the citizens, or are you helping yourselves? And again, your pocketbooks. Your video about planning and development mentions that public input is an essential part of the development review and information, and informs the decision-making process, that applicants have the right to attend meetings, and residents, near a new project or idea would be notified by mail. I have lived in Gilbert for 20 years. I have never been notified by mail. Please reconsider what you do for this town and for the people you serve, or we're going to end up like Chicago, Seattle, Portland, and Detroit. I live here, and I do not want to see that happen.
We have, excuse me, we have, we have one more speaker. Remove the people from the back of the room, please. Those three people holding up signs? Catherine Puckett, if you would like to come down, state your name and your residence. You'll have three minutes.
We can just end public comment right now. You can leave too, sir, if that's what you think. No, we're going back to rules of decorum in this meeting. We are trying to listen to everybody here this evening, and you're not giving them the opportunity for us to be able to hear from them.
Can we let Catherine have her time?
Sure. Thank you. I do appreciate it. I, this is a little bit different on the agenda. I have a question about consent item number 14. I'm not... Oh, sure, sure, sure. My question has to do with consent item number 14 regarding the purchase of the Dell computers. I'm certainly not opposed to that at all. My question really has to do with why the amount that is being approved is considerably higher than the amount that's in the invoice from Dell, to the tune of about $130, over $130,000 higher. So I'm just, I think, because I have a question, there may be others here in the audience that would also like to learn how the government works when we do these kind of change orders. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. That concludes our communications from citizens. We will move to the consent agenda. Mayor Peterson? May we take a break to test your voting?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to say that. Thank you. We need to take a break just to reset our equipment, because it resets during communications from citizens.
Okay, hopefully, all of our equipment is working now. Communications from citizens. I think we are pulling items 6, 11, and I'll pull 14 as well. Were there any other requests from council members, virtually or in person, to pull agenda items other than 6, 11, and 14? Seeing none. We'll do a mass motion first, moving up administrative items 21, 22, and 23. I'll make the motion on the agenda item 21 and 22. Motion to appoint the Fire and Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Pension Boards Deborah Stapleton as a regular member with a partial term September 20, 2022, and ending November 30, 2024, as well as agenda item 22. A motion to appoint the Self-Insured Trust Board Mary Delay and Lindy Mitchell as a regular members with terms beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2025. And then council member September, if you'd like to make the motion on 23.
Do that now, Vice Mayor?
Yes, please.
Great. I move to, I move to appoint the Planning Commission Leslie Davis as a regular member with a term beginning September 30, 2022, and ending September 29, 2026. William Fay as a regular member with a partial term beginning September 30, 2022, and, and September 29, 2023, and an additional full term beginning September 30, 2023, and ending September 29, 2027. And Lisa Gage and Charles Johnson as alternate members with terms beginning September 30, 2022, and ending September 29, 2023.
Great. And then we will also include in that motion items 3, 4, and 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Items 12, 13, 15, and 16. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6, I pulled this one. This is a grant from Department of Homeland Security. That's the originator of the funds. Obviously, it flows through another entity, but given their out-of-control spending at the federal level, I do oppose federal grants. I'll put as a, as a secondary note, it's hard to take these seriously when we have an out-of-control administration when it comes to our crisis at the border. And so, you know, we've, we've got, we've got serious issues, obviously, creating problems in our communities and our neighborhoods in Arizona, and so I will not be supporting this one tonight. But if there's a motion to approve, I'll entertain that now. On item 6.
Move to approve.
Second. Please vote.
Agenda item 11, I pulled this item. I do believe this organization, AZ Sen, does great work in the community. I simply principally don't agree with forced generosity of our communities, no matter how worthy the services are, so I won't be supporting this one tonight, although I appreciate their contributions to the community. But if there's a motion... But if there's a motion to approve or any comments.
I'll move to approve item 11. I will second to continue the mails to our seniors. Can we reset? Thank you.
All vote. Item... Motion approves 6-1. Item number 14, we did have Catherine, one of our citizens, bring up this agenda item and was hoping that we could have a staff member address...
Looks like Cezanne is making his way down to the podium. Actually, Cezanne and Jason and Eugene. No, not coming down, Eugene.
Well, Mayor, members of council, so this item for the $1.2 million, the question is the exact amount for the quote. So that is the amount we will be paying for our new MDCs, which are for our police department. I brought with me Jason Thompson. He's our desktop manager who worked on this quote, and he's going to explain the difference between the two items. So Jason, could you please share with them what that is?
Before you get started, sorry to interrupt. Can you explain what an MDC is?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor, council, for your question this evening. My name is Jason Thompson. I'm the IT desktop manager. So to your question, Councilmember September, the MDC is a mobile data computer, is what they call it. It's a ruggedized laptop computer that we provide to each police officer. Yes, sir. So the difference in the delta, I would say, between the quote and what was asked is basically to cover any costs for implementation that we will have, also to give us a little bit of a buffer for any, maybe if we see unforeseen expenses or any kind of replacements we may encounter over the next year.
Were there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion on item 14.
I'll move to approve item 14.
Sir, second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries 6-1, and that concludes our consent agenda item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to our public hearing portion of our agenda, we have four or five items. Four items to be heard during our public hearing portion of our agenda. I will open the public hearing. We have two liquor license, a property acquisition, and a code of Gilbert. Does anyone wish to have a separate presentation on any of these items? I haven't heard from anyone. Councilmember Anderson? No? No? I would then go ahead, and I don't have any public comments to speak on any of these items, so I would go ahead and close the public hearing and bring all four items back to the dais for motions.
Are we doing them one by one?
Sure, that would be easiest, probably.
Motion to approve item 17.
We have a motion to approve item 17. Vice Mayor Yentes?
Second.
Second, Councilmember September, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Now on to number 18.
Motion to approve item 18.
Second.
Vice Mayor Yentes, second by Councilmember Anderson, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. 19?
Move to approve item number 19, even though Vice Mayor got the fun ones.
Second.
Could we ask a question about this one?
Sure.
The staff, I'm not sure who the point person...
The property acquisition, item number 19, what kind of a question do you have? Maybe that will help.
Sure, just a process one. So I know you guys marked out which properties along there. Most of it is, we're looking at just either construction easements or public utility easements. But there was one private property interest holder there, and just want to know what communications have occurred so far. I know they said that the red flags have been raised in preliminary discussions, but would like to know what the...
Here comes Ryan.
...communications have been so far and any feedback we've received from that property.
Mayor, council, Ryan Blair, CIP. To answer your question, we have spoken to Mr. Kelly Freeman that lives, he's a private property owner. He owns a lot of parcels right there next to the future park and also the Alcatel Bridge. We spoke to him, really between 0 and 15% design. We wanted to get to him early and just understand concerns that he may have, expectations he has from us, and just kind of just basically start the process with him and understanding the projects coming, what was, again, his expectations be of the project team. He actually really appreciated us coming that early in the process, speaking to him, getting his concerns so that we can try to, where we can, where it's feasible, to make accommodations to him, in particularly a block wall for privacy, security gates, because the amount of traffic that will be flowing through here, so we can, the town can make sure that we secure his place. He had a few additional questions or comments that we're going to be trying to assess during the design phase. So our expectations now moving forward, we'll be speaking to him again. The 30% plans just came out, so now we have a better idea of what the roadway and things are going to look like adjacent to his property. So we're actually reaching out here the next short while to conversation with him again.
Based upon those preliminary designs, were we able to provide with him an expectation on how much property would be required to be acquired?
At the first meeting, we knew there was going to be some. We didn't know at the time how much that was. Now we have a better idea of that was. Currently, he does have 65-foot of right-of-way in front of his property. Because of the elevation of the bridge, how it's coming down right over the RWCD canal at that point, there will be some slopes issues. So that's what we're going to be discussing with him moving forward and how we can accommodate. He does have a building there that he does mechanical work in. So again, we're going to be having those conversations with him and seeing how we can accommodate him as part of the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we had a motion from Councilmember September. Do we have a second? Oh, a second from Councilmember Kaprowski. Are we ready to vote, Vice Mayor? Are you good? Did you get your answers? Yes, okay. Please vote. Motion passes 6-1. One item left on our public hearing agenda, code of Gilbert. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve item 20.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember September, second by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to our administrative items on our agenda, boards and commissions, we covered those, excuse me, 21, 22, and 23. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committees, reports from council liaisons for any boards, commissions, and committees. Seeing none. Moving on to communications report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Two items tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate Cory Gerard. He has been promoted to Assistant Fire Chief. He has been with the town for over 18 years, serving most recently as a deputy and then battalion chief, and we look forward to working with him in his new role. Next, Todd Gregorsky has recently retired from the Gilbert wastewater department after 24 years of service to the town. He started in collection systems, cleaning sewers, repairing pipes, and maintaining lift stations, and expanded his work experience by working as a commercial pretreatment inspector. Then he spent much of his career, 21 years, working as reclaimed water quality control technician in the reuse recharge section. It was promoted during his last year to the supervisor over recharge and compliance. Our teams greatly appreciate his dedication and pride and workmanship over the years, and we wish him the best of luck in his retirement.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. Glad you made it back this evening to join us. Report from council on current events. Seeing none. Report from mayor on current events. I would like to thank everyone that came out for the National Day of Service on 9/10 in conjunction with 9/11. There were groups of residents that came out and volunteered cleaning up the alleys in the northwest corner of Gilbert and Elliott. Landscape company that donated their truck and their tools and over 120 volunteers at that location, and then five or six of our elementary schools and Gilbert High School that had volunteers all lined up that did all kinds of jobs, from painting curbs for safety reasons to cleaning windows to painting murals within libraries. It was really great to see the residents come out to support the community in that way and giving back their time within Gilbert. I really appreciated being able to stop by and see some of them as they were doing that work. They were having a great time, and it just showed that they love being part of the community and doing the jobs that they were doing out on that day. And then I wanted to thank our Gilbert Fire Department and our Gilbert Police Department for the amazing event on 9/11 at our memorial. Again, every year I attend that event, and I think it can't get better, and then somehow it does. And I know it's a solemn day that we all come together for remembrance for all the lives lost and all the lives that we continue to lose because of the events on 9/11, 2001. And our Gilbert Fire Department and Police Department always have such a poignant message to share with the community, and I thank them for that. Congratulations to Assistant Chief Gerard. That was going to be one of my notes this evening, too. It's always great when we see our own being promoted within, and I look forward to working with Cory as one of our new assistant, as our new Assistant Chief. We will now have to recess our meeting and reconvene in executive session. Can I have a motion to recess the meeting?
So moved.
Vice Mayor, and a second, please.
Second.
Please vote. And we have a 6-0 vote on that with Councilmember Hendrick sustaining. We will now adjourn this meeting and move, well, we recess this meeting and move into our exec session. Thanks, everybody.